We have a pre-gavel item today that's a very special.
Recording in progress.
Our first item today is to recognize the life of Beatrice Gilmore through a proclamation that's in her honor. Beatrice Gilmore B was a prominent African-American woman in our Portland community. At the very young age of 11, she moved from Louisiana to Vanport with her family. In 1948, she survived the horrific Vanport flood and later shared her memories of Vanport as a storyteller for the Vanport Mosaic Project and the Oregon Fair Council Housing Council Bus Tours. She later became the first African-American to graduate from OHSU's School of Nursing. With us today to share a few words, we have her lifelong friend, Ed Washington, and of course, her daughter, Levita Gilmore Jones. Welcome, Ed, and welcome, Levita. It's great to have you here with us today. I'm sorry we're not in person, but it's great to see you at least virtually.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. It's good to be here today.
Thank you also, Mayor Wheeler. I hope you all can hear me okay?
Loud and clear. You sound great.
Good. Thank you.
Mayor Wheeler and council members, it is so good to see you. Some of you had the honor to meet my mom, and sadly, she did pass on December the 29th, but she lived a long, full life. And the love and light that she shared with people in this community will continue for many generations. And I'd just like to say that her vision and her mission for an equitable, robust public healthcare system is what fueled her energy for the years that she lived and worked in this community. She really wanted to make sure that healthcare was available, mental, physical, emotional healthcare was available to all peoples. And so I would say that the legacy for the city of Portland would be to be sure we invest in public healthcare for all people that live in our city, so that all can be well and can participate in the life that the city can so vibrantly offer to, that we can offer to one another. I will turn over to Ed, and Ed, go ahead and share your reflections.
Well, my reflections of Levita's mother, B. B was really my sister's best friend. They were in each other's wedding. We met B and her family in Vanport, and B was such a gracious person and such a wonderful person. And I remember when B started nursing training up at OHSU, she was the first African-American to be admitted. And I remember asking B, I was working up at OHSU at the time when she was a student, and I used to always, you would always hear the student nurses coming because they wore a uniform, they had a smock that was just starched like nobody's business, and that starch would be making it whenever they walked, you would hear. And I remember seeing B up there, and I asked her after she graduated, I said, "B, how was it for you being the first African-American?" And she said, "Ed, it was tough. It was very tough." And she shared with me a story. She said that she had to go in to see a patient who was quite ill, but she was not ill enough to treat B with disrespect because of the color of her skin. And she told B, "I'm not going to let," and she used the N-word, "black hands touch me." And I said, "B, what did you do?" She says, "Ed, I'm a nurse." She says, "I treated her." She says, "I just told her, 'You're gonna have to let these hands touch you today because I've been assigned to work with you, and I'm gonna do my job.'" And that's the kind of person B was. And I know that with us working together, she and I, on the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, I remember, B was a very, B is a very humble lady, very strong, but very, very humble. And I remember asking her, I said, "B, they need another person to help on the Fair Housing Council tours." And I said, "I've been asked to ask if you would like to do it." And she said, "Ed, I don't know if I can do that." She says, "I don't know if I have that much to offer." And I said, "B, you have as much to offer as anybody else." And so she went home and thought about it, and fast forward a little bit later, she says to me, she says, "Ed, I'm so glad you encouraged me and urged me to be part of that, and we're gonna miss B on those tours. We're gonna miss B for lots of reasons." And just one quick story, when she was going to nurses' training, she was attending Vancouver Avenue Baptist Church, and not many of you know where that church is. And her father was a deacon, and I don't even remember Mr. Cannon's first name because he was always referred to as Deacon Cannon by everybody in the community. And the church, knowing that B didn't have a lot of money, they helped her, so they gave her a job at church putting away the chairs after Sunday service. And sometimes when B would be real busy in school, she would call me and she says, "Ed, can you come put away the chairs for me today? I've gotta study tomorrow for a class." And you know, those are just wonderful memories. I'm gonna miss her. We're all gonna miss her. But you know, she touched so many people, and I may have encouraged her 38, 40 years later, but she will never know how much that dollar or two meant to me as a 14-year-old kid. So that's all I have to say about B. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ed, and thank you, Levita. We so appreciate your being here today, and I know some of my colleagues on the city council have a couple of remarks they'd like to make as well, if that's okay. Great, we'll start with Commissioner Maps. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, colleagues, guests. It's an honor for me to join you in celebrating the life and legacy of B Gilmore. I was sad to learn of Ms. Gilmore's passing, but I am glad that we have this opportunity to remember the contributions that Gilmore made to our community. As we've heard, she was a true Portland trailblazer, the first African-American nurse to graduate from the OHSU School of Nursing. I feel a particular and personal debt of gratitude to Ms. Gilmore. Here's why. I know what it's like to be one of the first people of color to hold an important job serving the people of Portland. I also know that I would not be a city commissioner today if it were not for the generations of Portland trailblazers who came before me. If you can hear my voice today, if you can see me, it is because I stand upon the shoulders of giants like Beatrice Gilmore, and I am not unique. If you are a Portlander who has set down roots in this community with the intent of living your best life, if you are a Portlander who is deeply committed to caring for your community, if you are a Portlander who is committed to opening doors for people who look like you, and if you are a Portlander who is deeply committed to opening doors for people who look nothing like you, then you too stand upon the shoulders of Portland pioneers like Beatrice Gilmore. Colleagues, for these reasons and more, I'm honored to join you in honoring the life and legacy of Beatrice Gilmore. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps. Commissioner Hardisty, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Ed Washington, and good morning, Levita Gilmore Jones. What an incredible legacy your grandmother leaves for us to emulate. I had the privilege of seeing her on several of the Vanport tours, and when I heard Ed Washington talk about her humbleness, meeting her, you would never know her legacy and how many doors she opened for so many Portlanders along the way. And so I feel privileged to share space and conversations. And Levita, you're pretty bad in your own right, and so the legacy continues on. And I am very grateful that the mayor chose to do a pre-gavel event today to really take a moment and honor a true Portland trailblazer. And so thank you so much for sharing your grandmother with us, and thank you for the legacy that we all continue to embrace.
Commissioner, I just wanna, I'm her daughter, and I know you know that.
You know, I am so sorry.
No, I know you know that, but you know, morning coffee, that's gotta kick in.
Coffee fixes everything, Levita.
It does. It totally does.
No matter how many times I clean my glasses, you know, it's days are just like that. My apologies.
No worries.
If anything applies, I was gonna say, anyway, let me just stop while I'm way behind.
Commissioner Hardisty, we all have these mornings, you know that.
Yes, we do. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
Awesome. Commissioner Rubio, good morning.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, and thank you for bringing this special proclamation to council, and thank you, Mr. Washington, for being here, and Ms. Gilmore Jones, for your wonderful reflections today. I'm so sad that I didn't have the opportunity to know your mother and your friend, but from what I do know, it's evident that she was truly representing what the very best of Portland is. And she had several impressive accomplishments that I read about and learned about throughout her life, some of which has been talked about here, but clearly doesn't cover even all of it. But it was clear that at the core, she had the kind and loving heart of a healer, and that that was most important to her. And she truly has helped to shape our city and community, and her legacy will, as others have mentioned, will continue on in all the people and all the lives that she's touched throughout her life. So I personally feel very honored to be here to recognize her today, and my very best wishes are with you and all of her loved ones during this time as we celebrate her. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ryan, good morning.
Yes, good morning. Good morning, Levita Gilmore Jones and Ed Washington. So good to see you, Ed.
Good to see you.
We go back at Portland State, which you look like the same as you did when we were at Portland State. I certainly don't, but anyway, it's great to see you. God, thank you for your stories this morning. You know, stories are so healing, and I heard of her, but now I had a glimpse into her life because of your stories. An humble community icon she is, she will always be. And Ed, your story about how she dealt with that one patient was so gripping. And you know, you always try to take stories and figure out how to inspire yourself to be a better person, and that certainly does that. I know in the political environment we're in right now, there's just a lot of, there's some nastiness going on. There's some mean behavior. But my job as a public servant is to listen to those that, you know, probably don't even like me or think that I'm gonna agree with them, and so, because I'm in a service position. Boy, there are days where I just need to remember the story that you just told about Levita's mom, and it really was truly inspiring to be here this morning to learn more about your mother. And as was said earlier, she's a trailblazer, and I'm just really blessed at this moment in time to learn more about her. Thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you both. I am going to read proclamation on behalf of the city council, but first, I just want to acknowledge you, Levita, for your work on helping us draft this proclamation. Thank you for that. Whereas Beatrice Leola Cannon Gilmore was born in Tulala, Louisiana, on June 29th, 1931, and at the age of 13 migrated with her parents and siblings to Oregon in April of 1944, where she engaged in the life of Vanport, Oregon, while her parents worked in the Swan Island Kaiser shipyards. And whereas, B and her family were in Vanport on May 31st, 1948, and survived the flood that destroyed the city and washed its residents into Portland. And whereas, B pursued a career in nursing and was the first African-American nurse to graduate from the OHSU School of Nursing in 1955, and later in her career, joined the community healthcare faculty at the OHSU School of Nursing and served as a voting member of OHSU's Institutional Review Board. And whereas, B, over the next 44 years, dedicated her life to serving others in the field of public health as a nurse, teacher, and organizer with others of the Northeast Healthcare Clinic, and concluded her time of service as a Multnomah County Health Department Clinic Manager in East and North Multnomah County. And whereas, B lived life to the fullest, and during the last decade of her life, was actively involved in the civic life of Portland and Oregon as a storyteller for the Vanport Mosaic Festival and the Oregon Fair Housing Council of Oregon Bus Tour, and was a member of the Oregon Mortuary and Cemetery Board. And whereas, B was a woman of faith and supported and guided the spiritual well-being of those in her family and faith community as B Gilmore, wife of the late Reverend Roselle Gilmore, and as a lay leader in Bereon Baptist Church, Salt and Light Lutheran Church, and Levin Community. And whereas, the city of Portland and its citizens wish to honor B Gilmore for her distinguished service and unwavering commitment to equity in public health and community life. Now therefore, I Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim recognition of B Gilmore's many contributions to our city and its residents, express our deep appreciation for her dedication to the progress of this community, and extend to her family our sincere sympathy upon her passing. Thank you all very much, and Ed and Levita, thank you for everything you continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Colleagues, we will now call the city council into session. This is the January 12th, 2022 morning session of the Portland City Council. Good morning, Kealan, please call the roll.
Morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. Rubio.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Hardisty.
Here.
Maps.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here. Under Portland City Code and state law, the city council is holding this meeting electronically. All members of the council are attending remotely by video and teleconference, and the city has made several avenues available for the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. The meeting is available to the public on the city's YouTube channel, E-Gov-PDX, www-portlandoregon.gov/video, and of course, Channel 30. The public may provide written testimony to the city council by emailing the council The council is taking these steps as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact and to promote physical distancing. Pandemic is an emergency that threatens the public health, safety, and welfare, which requires us to meet remotely by electronic communications. Thank you for your patience, your flexibility, and your understanding as we manage through this ongoing situation to conduct the city's business. And with that, we'll turn it over to legal counsel for the rules of order and decor. Lauren, it looks like you're here today. Good morning.
I am here. Good morning, everyone. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance at the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions, reports, or first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at wwwportland.gov/council/agenda contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony while the city council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you're representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct, such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being placed on hold or ejected from their remainder of the electronic meeting. Please be aware that all council meetings are recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. First up today is Communications, item 11, first individual, please, Kealan.
Request of Alex Sarusi to address council regarding legislation to ban the sale of foie gras. We received a request that Alex is withdrawing there.
Very good. Item 12, next individual, please.
Request of Rosalind McCallard to address council regarding the proposed ban on the sale of foie gras.
Good morning.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hi, good morning. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Technology and coffee, right?
Yeah, exactly. Those are the two keys to everything.
The two keys to everything. Well, I appreciate the time. I appreciate being here today, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen. My name is Rosalind McCallard. I'm a small business owner here in Portland, and I'm here today to speak in favor of the city ordinance prohibiting the sale of foie gras from force-fed birds. By implementing such a ban, the city of Portland has the opportunity to reinforce its reputation as a progressive, equitable place to live, work, and play. All Portland local businesses, like mine, stand to benefit as a result of this ban. As you know, foie gras is a luxury food item produced from the diseased, enlarged livers of ducks and geese. Due to a variety of environmental and animal welfare concerns surrounding its productions, numerous localities, including New York City and the entire state of California, as well as several countries, have banned the sale and/or production of the foie gras within their borders. I strongly support a similar ban on the sale of force-fed foie gras here in Portland, not only because it's the right thing to do from a sustainable and animal welfare standpoint, but also because it's protecting Portland's reputation as an ethical, forward-thinking city in the economic interest of small business owners, much such as myself and my husband, Clayton McCallard. Consumer goodwill is everything, and we know the vast majority of people do not want to see foie gras on Portland menus. By coming together as a community and putting our collective foot down against force-fed foie gras, we can make a name for Portland as a leader in ethical and sustainable business practices. By passing an ordinance, by banning the sale of foie gras, the Portland City Council would be supporting local business. All Portland business owners stand to benefit from the reputational gains that would come from the passage of a local law banning such a socially unpopular product. What's more, passing this proposal would reestablish Portland as a hub of effective governance responsive to the concerns of its citizens. A ban on the sale of force-fed foie gras would clearly show that our community is not willing to tolerate inhumane or irresponsible business practices for the benefit of a privileged few. For all of these reasons, I want to thank Commissioners Maps and Rubio for your stated leaderships on this issue, and I hope you will officially introduce the ordinance soon. I encourage the other city council members, and hi, Joanne, I know I used to be on your business council, so hello, real quick there. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hardisty, that was rude. I hope you will officially introduce the ordinance soon, and I encourage the other council members to support the effort as well. It's time to ban the sale of force-fed foie gras in Portland. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Next individual, please, Kealan, item number 13.
Request of Belinda Davis to address council regarding the proposed ban on the sale of foie gras.
Good morning, Belinda.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Belinda Davis, and I've been a resident of Portland since 2015. Obviously, I'm not born and bred. You can hear that in my voice. I'm the Development Manager of Animal Outlook, a national animal protection organization, and I'm here to discuss my support of the proposed legislation to ban the sale of foie gras in Portland. Foie gras literally means fatty liver in French, and it's produced through a force feeding process where a metal tube is shoved down the throats of ducks or geese, and a corn solution is pumped directly into their stomachs. The amount of, excuse me, the amount of food they're force-fed every day could be compared to your eye eating about 30 pounds of pasta in one day. This corn solution is also nutritionally inadequate for these birds. The process of foie gras production intentionally causes a diseased state in the liver of these birds, a disease called hepatic lipodosis. Their livers become fatty and waxy and often increase about eight to 12 times in size. Toxins build up in their blood, and these toxins sometimes reach the brain of the birds, and they've been documented to suffer from an increase in cranial pressure, comas, and premature death. These birds are more prone to pneumonia and can suffer from a ruptured esophagus or liver. Animal Outlook has gone undercover previously to document foie gras production, and the investigator who went undercover witnessed the birds being force-fed multiple times per day, ducks pressing themselves into corners, vocalizing, and trying to escape, showing signs of stress and fear, and avoidance of the force-feeding tube. Ducks on the slaughter line are lifted and shackled by their feet, and they've been witness to lift their heads out of the water that's supposed to be electrified to stun them, so they're going through the slaughter process while they're still conscious. And ducks and geese have been seen with swollen abdomens and panting while waiting for slaughter, again showing the stress that they're experiencing. These animals are forced to live in severe confinement and are slaughtered by being shackled and having their throats slit. They're unable to live a natural life, and they're slaughtered at around 100 days of age. I personally have volunteered with farmed animals for the last 15 years, and I've had the honor to know individual ducks and geese. Most of the ducks I've known are sweet, funny, they're a joy to be around. Geese are more of a mixed bag. Some are lovable like ducks, others are like grumpy old men. But they all have unique personalities, they take great care of their families, they form lasting friendships, and they love to be in the water. Those used for foie gras production are denied these natural behaviors, and they suffer immensely. By introducing a ban on the sale of foie gras in Portland, you'll be saving lives and easing suffering. I urge you to please consider this ban. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Belinda. Next individual, please, item 14.
Request of Aubrey Russell to address council regarding monument removal.
Good morning.
Good morning. I can't see myself. Can anyone hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you loud and clear, Aubrey.
All right, thank you. I want to, Aubrey Russell, I want to talk about process and bias. The Parks Bureau has been a busy advocate against the inclusion of Lincoln and Roosevelt statues in the National Register nomination of the South Park Blocks. This follows their advocacy to bias the South Park Blocks master plan against those same monuments. One reason to request the pause in the monuments process is to stop continuing bias, but Parks continues to be a busy advocate in front of the State Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation, for example. Director Long submitted a letter and testimony to that committee. This is how the chair of the committee responded to Director Long's submission. Quote, "The statements that we received in that letter are quite political and contextually not fully accurate," end quote. Also, the chair says, quote, "The comments contain a lot of guilt by association with only partial truths in the presentation," end quote. And in addition to much more, the committee said, quote, "What we received is not quite all the story, nor is it balanced." I would add my own comment. Director Long says that Portland Historic Landmarks Commission, quote, "requested categorizing the Roosevelt and Lincoln statues as non-contributing resources." What Director Long doesn't say is that the Parks Department had asked the Portland Historic Landmarks Commission to, had told them that the statues weren't coming back. Director Long also doesn't say that as a technical matter, the state won't include in the listing resources that aren't present, and of course, Parks and RAC have ensured that the statues aren't present. So Director Long has been a busy advocate. Of course, some will side with the credibility and the influence and the power that are lent to her by you, the city of Portland. What is still missing, the public is still missing. Remember what park staff told me about the nine documented comments that were the basis for the bias in the South Park Blocks master plan. The park staff told me, quote, "About the nine comments, quote, 'We can't speak with every single person in the city.'" In fact, it seems to be Parks' preferred method to have selective conversations with selected entities that can be won over by biased information. Finally, I want to quote the RAC spokesperson Heather Nelson Kent in response to our call for a transparent and impartial process. This is from the Portland Tribune, quote, "Kent notes that none of the statues were subject to a public process when they were erected," end quote. First, I find that difficult to believe, given the participation of the Commissioner for Parks and the mayor and the firemen's band, et cetera, et cetera, in the dedication of, for example, the Lincoln statue. in the dedication of, for example, the Lincoln statue. But my, my point is not to highlight the inaccuracies and untruths, but to highlight what is a pretty bold rejection of the idea of public process. There should be a public process, please, without the bias and advocacy of Parks and RAC. Thank you. I see my time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is item 15, please.
Request of Brandon Farley to address council regarding political exploitation of homeless citizens. Brandon hasn't joined the call yet.
All right, very good. With that, then, we will move to the consent agenda, which we don't have, correct? There is no consent.
Oh, no. We do have two items on the consent.
Oh, you're right. I see him down there. Have any items been pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes, we've had a request to pull nineteen.
Nineteen is pulled. We'll move it to the end of the regular agenda. Please call the role on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Rubio.
Hi.
Ryan.
Hi.
Hardisty.
Hi.
Maps.
Hi.
Wheeler.
All right, the consent agenda is adopted. We'll move to the first time certain item, please. Item number sixteen, time certain nine forty-five AM. And seventeen together, thank you.
Accept the City of Portland 2022 Federal Legislative and Regulatory Agenda. And number seventeen, accept the City of Portland 2022 State Legislative Agenda.
Colleagues, this morning, we're considering the final 2022 Federal Legislative and Regulatory Agenda and the 2022 State Legislative Agenda. Both are up for approval. The federal and state teams at the Office of Government Relations have been hard at work, continuing to connect with council offices as well as bureau staff to incorporate the feedback we provided them during the work session we had back on November thirtieth. I'd like to take a moment to sincerely thank the OGR team and acknowledge both the time and the work that went into developing and further refining the agendas that we have before us today. I look forward to working with the OGR team on all of these items going forward. Nils Tylström, Stacy Cowan, and Eric Knoll from OGR have joined us today to present on these agendas and to answer any questions that may arise. So with that, I will hand this off to Interim Director of the Office of Government Relations, Nils Tylström, to provide an overview of the two agendas. Nils, personally, I want to thank you for stepping in at a challenging time and being willing to serve as an interim. We really appreciate it. And we're frankly pleased that we have the opportunity, all of us have the opportunity to benefit from your experience. So welcome, and we'll just turn it over to you at this point.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for those words. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioner. My name is Nils Tylström, and my pronouns are he/him. And I am the Interim Director of the Office of Government Relations for the City of Portland. I am joined today by Stacy Cowan, our State Relations Manager, and Eric Knoll, our State Lobbyist. We will be presenting the final versions of the 2022 Federal Legislative and Regulatory Agenda and the 2022 State Legislative Agenda for your consideration and acceptance. So I will walk through the work our office has done to get us to this point and cover items that have changed since we met on our November thirtieth work session. But first, I want to take a moment to thank Senator John Bos Lawrence, our Small Bureau Equity Manager from the Office of Equity and Human Rights, who has worked with us throughout the process, and you will see that work reflected in the preamble to both agendas, centering racial and disability equity and language throughout both agendas. I also want to thank Stone Hudson, our Tribal Relations Associate, who is currently assisting the State Relations Program in cross-program collaboration work. So the road to building the city's state and federal agendas began in September when the office put out a call for issues to bureau and council offices. The input received from our call for issues to bureaus and offices was followed up by outreach we conducted to vet issues with state legislators, congressional offices, council offices, subject matter experts, and city attorneys, community-based organizations, and other important stakeholders. We then distilled this information into draft documents we discussed with you all at a work session on November thirtieth. Since then, we have previewed the draft with congressional offices, state legislators, and community partners, and have made these materials available to the public on our website. We gathered additional information through December's special session in Salem and ongoing outreach with key partners and stakeholders, and of course, working closely with your offices and city bureaus at each stage of the process. So first, I want to turn to the 2022 Federal Legislative and Regulatory Agenda. My first, one more, one more round of thank yous. I want to acknowledge the good work of Haley Tortorella in our office, as well as Vicky Cram, who is our city's DC representative. So the report, the 2022 Federal Legislative and Regulatory Agenda you have before you is very similar to what you saw in the November thirtieth work session. And as a reminder, we have seven policy priorities in the agenda, each containing different opportunities for engagement and action. So the seven priorities are addressing houselessness and housing stability, safe, community safety and first response, economic recovery and prosperity, and those are reflective of council's adopted priorities. Following that, we have racial justice, climate and environmental justice, infrastructure investment, and maintaining local authority and opposing preemption. So I will go through the changes between November version and the versions you have before you today. So please feel free to jump in if you have any questions about anything before you, and I'll skip over anything that's akin to a Scrivener's error or a minor edit. So first, under the addressing houselessness and housing stability priority, we added an item relating to the use of surplus federal property for outdoor alternative sheltering strategies like villages and safe park programs. We moved, and then next, we moved items relating to childcare assistance and nutritional programs from the economic recovery and prosperity priority to the addressing houselessness and housing stability, recognizing the role that these programs play in housing stability. Next, under the community safety and first response priority, we added an item relating to increasing opportunities for local organizations to address the funding of community safety initiatives, including locally, excuse me, locally led gun violence prevention programs. Under the economic recovery and prosperity priority, we added an item regarding the Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act, focused on resources for job training, dislocated workers, and placement assistance. And then, in the climate and environmental justice priority, we added an item related to the Water Resources Development Act projects in the Lament River Basin. And we wanted to highlight this item because of the work the Bureau of Environmental Services in Portland Parks and Recreation has done and earned credibility through their partnership with the US Army Corps of Engineers, which included over seventeen million dollars of investment in three urban projects. And it forms the basis of what could be the next big federal partnership that we anticipate in this year, which is an investment with, of potentially thirty-two million dollars through the Army Corps of Engineers. That money would go to five different, could go to five different projects in the Lament River and Columbia Slough, including the Culvert at Tryon Creek. These projects are a direct result of the advocacy through the city's federal agenda and have had the support of both Senators Merkley and Wyden, and Congressman Lumenauer and Schrader, and from the tribal community. And finally, we amended the Portland Harbor Superfund site cleanup action item to include language relating to a provision in this year's National Defense Authorization Act that ensures the Department of Defense account for the responsibilities it has in connection to superfund facilities. And that language was championed by Congressman Lumenauer. So that covers the changes between the work session draft and the documents you have before you, and I'll pause for questions and comments on the federal agenda. So if there are none, I'll recognize Stacy Cowan, who's our State Relations Manager, to go over the changes in the 2022 State Legislative Agenda.
Thank you, Nils.
Thank you, Nils. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. My name is Stacy Cowan. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm the State Government Relations Manager for the City of Portland. I'm joined today by Eric Knoll, our State Lobbyist. The 2022 State Legislative Agenda that you have before you today is very similar to the draft that you reviewed in the work session on November thirtieth. As a reminder, the agenda includes five priority issue areas, including houselessness and housing stability, community safety, economic recovery and prosperity, climate and environmental justice, and local authority. I'll summarize the two substantive changes that we made, and again, I'll not necessarily speak to any of the grammatical changes that we made between the November version and the version that you have before you today. Under the priority of houselessness and housing stability, we've updated the first bullet to reflect the legislative action that was taken during the specialist session on November, I'm sorry, December thirteenth. The legislature passed Senate Bill 891, which extends the safe harbor provision for residential renters who've applied for emergency rent assistance. And the second substantive change is also under houselessness and housing stability priority. We updated the behavioral health item to reflect the request and comments made by Mayor Wheeler during the work session. This item now identifies the need for a long-term strategic vision that maximizes cross-jurisdictional collaboration in addition to investing in the behavioral health workforce. That covers the changes between the work session draft and the document that you have before you today. I'm happy to pause and answer any questions or pause for comments on the state legislative agenda before moving to just a few closing comments.
I'm not seeing any.
Thank you, Mayor. So just as a reminder, we will gather the morning of January twenty-seventh for the annual legislative breakfast with members of council and our Portland delegation, which again, will be held remotely. The legislature will officially convene on Tuesday, February first. We're expecting all committee hearings are going to be held virtually, and the Capitol Building to remain open to the public. What this means for your state legislative team is the possibility of some in-person legislative meetings while balancing mostly a virtual format for the session. And then again, as a reminder, once session starts, the Oregon Constitution requires adjournment after thirty-five days, including weekends. So no extra days for illness, weather, or other delays. If lawmakers start February first, they must finish by March seventh. Since we met in November on the thirtieth, several significant changes in the legislature have occurred, including Senator Johnson's resignation in December to focus on her gubernatorial campaign, and Speaker Kotek's announcement that she plans to resign her position on January twenty-first to focus on her campaign for governor. So this means that, among other changes, when the legislature gavels in on February first, one of the first orders of business will be to elect a new speaker. And then lastly, I'll just say that despite the changes and the uncertainty underpinning the session, the state team will confidently continue to move forward representing the city's interests in Salem and implementing the city's legislative agenda. So with that, I'm happy to turn it back to Nils.
Thank you, Stacy. So I want to, I want to close, and I want to sincerely thank the team at the Office of Government Relations for all their work to produce the 2022 agendas. I want to thank, again, Senator John Bos Lawrence, our Small Business, our Small Bureau Equity Manager, to help, for helping us deepen our focus on centering racial justice, and to the bureaus for their immense expertise, and to council and your staff for your leadership. And that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So colleagues, if there are no questions, we'll entertain a motion to accept the City Portland 2022 Federal Legislative and Regulatory Agenda.
So move.
Commissioner Hardisty moves. Commissioner Ryan Secondson, any further discussion? Please call the role on item sixteen.
Rubio.
I want to thank you, Nils, Stacy, and Eric for presenting a robust federal and state legislative agenda for us today that reflects our values. I'm also excited about the potential investments and policies coming from the federal government that backs up our council priorities and also our infrastructure needs. And I also just want, wanting to share how thrilled I am to see that we have a robust climate justice agenda this year. Because to really move the dial, we need federal government to step up the investments at the local level. On our state agenda, I'm also glad to see plans that also reflect, again, our highest and the continue reflecting our highest and immediate council priorities, because we still have unfinished business from 2021. So I'm hopeful that we'll make good progress despite the short time in the short session. I also just want to echo Mayor's earlier comments in appreciating your team for all your hard work in a very, very difficult year. There were a lot of changes this year. And working during a pandemic in an environment where face-to-face interaction are critical for the success of any policy conversation has not been easy, I'm sure. And you've all had to be very persistent and very creative to get us where we need to be. So I just want to recognize that and just appreciate that about all of you. So our offices are here to support your work whenever you need us. So I'm happy to vote aye.
Ryan.
Thank you so much. Thank you for this report, Nils and Stacy. It really follows the recent work session well. And I can tell the listening that took place there and in meetings with each office. It's just really feels like we're aligned and in sync, in my opinion, more than we were a year ago. And I'm really especially grateful that under our priority of houselessness, we are advocating for the state to rapidly accelerate improvements for our safety net, namely behavioral health and also mental health. You know, our great state is less than on this issue. We're at the bottom of the nation on caring for those facing such challenges. And our perfection for those of serving those with late-stage mental health, behavioral health has resulted in a downward spiral for decades. So we really have nowhere to go but up as we fall short, both on first responder systems to treatment access and, of course, recovery. But we are taking the first steps. I think we're helping lead the way of moving the state and the local area from denial to acceptance of this issue. We're also providing innovation on the ground for these investments with our partnership with the county to serve many in this category on our streets, the Safe Trust Villages, where the restorative setting of the village will provide behavioral health and mental health services to lead to an on-ramp for successful, long-term housing and a fulfilling life. Anyway, I'm really excited of the momentum that we are all synced up and ready to go. Thank you so much for your good work. I vote aye.
Hardisty.
I hope Nils isn't going to blush too much before this council meeting is over, but I want to add my appreciation to Neil stepping into this interim role. And also to the entire team, Stacy, and the entire team. What I know is that, as Commissioner Rubio said, it's hard enough actually representing us at the federal and state level. You've had to learn a lot more new skills, as all of us have, as we continue to work through the pandemic. And as a reminder to some of my newer colleagues, one of the brilliance, one of the brilliant things about our legislative agenda always is that it is a hundred percent entire city council-supported document at the state level as well as the federal level. And I think it always shows the power of the city of Portland when we can collectively all agree on a set of priorities and move cooperatively to make those happen. And as a former legislator, I can say, you know, some things we had hoped it wouldn't take so long to get done, and other things, we've got it done in a very timely manner. But the professionalism, the leadership of our team is really second to none. So I appreciate the office. I appreciate the focus on our, both of our legislative agendas, and I'm very happy to vote aye.
Maps.
Like my colleagues, I want to thank Government Relations for your hard work, translating this council's priorities into a legislative agenda for both the federal level and the state level. Moving forward, I'm excited to build partnerships with other government agencies around issues surrounding houselessness, public safety, and environmental protections. For these reasons and more, I'm happy to vote aye.
Wheeler.
I have a prediction, which is that when we get into the next legislative session, it's not going to be about who is right. It's not even going to be about who has done the most research or has the facts, the most facts on their side. I believe that the same types of personal interpersonal dynamics that we're seeing at large will filter into the state capital, and it will be about relationships. And as I look at this team that we currently have assembled, I want to acknowledge, number one, that you are understaffed and under-resourced, given the challenge that you have ahead. And I look forward And I look forward, Niels, to continuing to work with you to address those issues as quickly as we possibly can so that you have the resources you need to be successful, both at the federal level as well as at the state level. The second thing you already acknowledged in your staff presentation, which is that the legislature is in flux. And also at the federal level, we're going to see a lot of flux. And so that's going to make the job of lobbying even harder than it was before. It's sort of hard to tell where all the chips are going to fall. So I just want to acknowledge that you're in a a dynamic environment. And this will probably be just about the most challenging couple of years that you've ever faced in this job going forward. So I appreciate the great work you've done up to this point to bring this council along in a unified way. I vote aye. The report is adopted. Item seventeen. I'll entertain a motion to accept the City of Portland's state legislative agenda for twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Commissioner Hardisty moves.
Second.
Commissioner Ryan seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll. Kealan.
Rubio. Ryan.
Aye.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Good luck. I vote aye. The report is accepted. The agenda is approved. Thank, thank you to all of you on the Office of Government Relations for your great work.
Thank you.
Kealan, item number eighteen.
Consider appeal of the Goose Hollow Foothills League against the Design Commission's decision to approve with conditions a seventeen-story, one hundred and seventy-five
I apologize. I jumped the gun. This is a time certain item. We're not at ten thirty yet. So we have to hold off on that. So, but that was good practice.
Thank you.
This makes perfect. Let's move to the regular agenda, please. Item number twenty-one.
Accept bid of Stellar J Corporation for the Columbia Boulevard Wastewater Treatment Plant Headworks screening improvements for ten million, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
Very good. Colleagues, the Bureau of Environmental Services needs to improve performance of Headworks screening at the Columbia Boulevard Wastewater Treatment Plant. Existing screens have outlived their useful life. They're no longer effective in removing the amount of debris the plant currently receives. BES needs to replace the Headworks screening equipment in order to improve treatment plant reliability and to comply with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit Requirements. Chief Procurement Officer Becco Taylor is here to present the report. Welcome, Becco.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler. City Council, I'm Becco Taylor, Chief Procurement Officer. I use the pronouns he, him, his. City of Council approved ordinance one nine zero two eight seven on February third, two thousand twenty-one for the Columbia Boulevard Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Project. The, the overall budget was twelve million and the confidence level was high. Procurement Services issued the invitation to bid on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one with a due date of December second, twenty twenty-one. Five bids were received in total. Stellar J Corporation was the low bidder and is a recommended awardee. Stellar Jade's bid came in at ten million, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, which is nine point five percent under budget. The city standard twenty percent aspirational goal applies to this solicitation and the following is a breakdown of the utilization that was submitted. Seventy point six percent will be self-performed by Stellar J Corporation. Twenty-seven point five three percent will be performed by certified COVID subcontractors. And one point eight percent of this contract will be performed by nine certified subcontractors. Stellar J Corporation is located in Woodland, Washington and is not a state COVID certified contractor. It's a white male-owned firm. They have a current City of Portland Business Tax Registration and are in full compliance with all of the city's contracting requirements. BES has funds available in FY twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four's budget for construction, inspection and management of this project. If there are any questions about the procurement process, I'm happy to answer them. Mr. David Hammond is the BES Project Manager.
Thank you, Becco. Commissioner Hardisty has a question.
Thank you, Becco. That was a very thorough report. And I, and I just had a question when I looked at this particular contract. I've noticed this contractor traditionally has very tiny subcontracting contracts. So when I look at the list and see a twenty-seven hundred dollar contract and a five thousand dollar contract and a thirty thousand dollar contract out of a out of a ten million dollar contract, you know, it just makes me kind of scratch my head. Do we, do we have any long-term data? I mean, what do we, what are we measuring when we say we are investing in minority and women-owned companies? Because I, you know, if I, yeah, I guess that's my question. And I don't know if you can answer that question today, but I've noticed a trend with this particular contractor that this is a consistent pattern. So I'm just curious if your office is noticing the same kind of pattern that I
We do notice it and it's acknowledged. Stellar J does have a history of breaking up the projects in the small, small pieces for minority-owned firms. We're investing through our office through the inclusive contracting manager. That role will actually liaise with bureaus and the community directly to offer solutions for companies like Stellar J to bolster those percentages in the subcontract plan. So that investment, we, we, that, that was approved last year. But we intend to implement some of those practices to improve the subcontracting percentages for companies like Stellar J by providing an in-house service to match them with members of the BIPOC community, the BIPOC business community.
Thank you. I, that, that will be a huge improvement because I've seen too many of these in my three years here. And it just, it, it, it doesn't, it appears to serve not the purpose of actually helping to build minority and women-owned firms. So I'm glad to see that you have also noticed that in your short time and have a plan to address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty.
I don't have any more questions, Mayor.
Very good. Anybody else have any questions? Becco, does that complete your report?
That completes my report, Mayor Wheeler.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Maps, a second from, I'm sorry, who is that? Commissioner Hardisty? Commissioner Hardisty seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Great report. I vote aye.
Hardisty.
Thank you, Director Taylor, for your report. I, I think we have to pay close attention to how we subcontract. I mean, I, 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 I don't like us calling this a win because I don't think somebody making twenty-seven hundred dollars out of a contract is a win for a very small minority contractor. I am going to vote yes on this and I look forward to working with Director Taylor to make sure that we are not just living within the words of the law, but the spirit of the law as well. So today I vote aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. I look forward to being held accountable.
Maps.
I'm excited to see this project move forward. It, it's an important step towards keeping our rivers clean. For these reasons and more, I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I love hearing Commissioner Hardisty's questions and Director Taylor's responses to her questions. And Director Taylor, I have great confidence in you. And I, I appreciate the attitude that you are bringing to the job, the seriousness you're bringing to the job. And how often do people, colleagues, say, I look forward to you holding me accountable? Not many. And Becco, I can tell you mean it too. And that's, that really speaks highly of you and your leadership. So I, I thank you personally for that. It's just, it's, it's a breath of fresh air. So thank you.
Thank you.
I vote aye. The report is accepted. Next item, we're still not at ten thirty. Let's move on to item twenty-two, please.
Amend contract with Northwest Geotech Inc. to increase amount by three hundred thousand dollars to provide geotechnical engineering services for the Spectator Venues Program.
Colleagues, this item's an emergency ordinance and that's due to the time-sensitive nature of the work currently being performed under this contract at Providence Park Stadium. Spectator Venues Program Manager Carl Lyle, who you all know, and Spectator Venues Program Coordinator Lauren Browdy, who you also know. They're here to present on this contract amendment item. Welcome, Carl and Lauren. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Carl Lyle will be joining us shortly. I'm Lauren Browdy with the Spectator Venues Program. The ordinance before you today will allow the city to increase the existing direct on-call contract with a certified DVE, MBE, COVID-registered Oregon firm from a current not-to-exceed amount of a hundred thousand dollars to a new not-to-exceed amount of four hundred thousand dollars. Because this is an increase of more than twenty-five percent over the original contract amount, the city council approval is required. It's important to note that this is an on-call contract for as needed services and actual spending on this contract is controlled by issuing task orders for specific work order items. The city is not actually committing to spending this total amount, but we anticipate our actual costs will be less than the new not-to-exceed amount. We're recommending approving this amendment because of an urgent nature of this work that is currently being performed by our consultant. Delays in the work associated with launching a competitive process for a new contract award would create an unacceptable risk for our venues. In short, Northwest Geotech, under this contract, is assisting the city in responding to a recent and somewhat alarming increase in groundwater that has begun flowing into the lower levels of the stadium from below Southwest Eighteenth Avenue. And we've already installed a water collection and removal system that is helping to protect the stadium from damage. But the source of the problem has not been resolved. And in order to protect the integrity of the structure, we need to reduce the amount of water entering the site. Northwest Geotech is in the process of designing mitigation measures that would be doing this, but we've run out of capacity on our existing contract and delays at this point would be unacceptable. I see Carl Lyle has also joined us and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions on this item? Thank you, Lauren. Do we have any public testimony, Kealan, on this emergency ordinance?
No one signed up.
Please call the, uh, sorry, Commissioner Hardisty has a question.
Thank you. And so we're authorizing you to do exactly what?
Yeah. So this is to increase the contract amount of our existing contract so we can continue the geotechnical engineering work that we've already begun to address the inflow of groundwater we've been experiencing at Providence Park Stadium.
And do you anticipate these additional funds will fix the groundwater leak? Or is this just to see what's wrong?
Yeah. So this has been almost a two-year effort at this point that we've been experiencing the groundwater intrusion. And so our hope is that with these additional funds, we will be able to address in the long term, the influx of water that we've been experiencing.
So I would just jump in. Thank you for the question, Commissioner Hardisty. Appreciate that. The, this, this contract is the design contract. So this is the, this is the engineering design piece that's designing the system that we hope will actually address and stop the inflow of groundwater into the lower levels of the stadium. As you, you can imagine, whenever you're chasing water underground, there's a whole lot of unknowns and uncertainty and a lot of permitting agencies involved. So it's pretty complex work. And we've simply run out of funds on the design contract to be able to continue that work. And so this amendment allows us to increase that amount and continue the work and hopefully get something constructed, you know, within the, the coming months and, and get the problem resolved.
And do you anticipate there will be a general fund ask to finish this project? Or is this going to come from the Spectator Venues Fund or what, what, what's, what's next?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you for asking it. Yes, I think we, we are considering putting in a general fund ask in the spring bump process to at least allow for the, the conversation about how we might pay for this. At this time, the work under this contract is being paid for out of the Spectator Fund completely. And, and that can continue. It's, from, from our perspective, it's, it's a, it's a broader problem than, than really the stadium or the Spectator Fund should have to shoulder itself. This is sort of a neighborhood city, city problem. The water is coming from elsewhere in the neighborhood into the stadium site. So I think, I think there's a good conversation to have with BES and BDS and, and you know, other folks who are sort of involved in this permitting project and, and trying to, trying to understand what's going on with groundwater and where the responsibility lies there. So yes, I think there will be an ask for at least some portion of the construction cost coming. But it's not, it's not implicated by this contract amendment.
Thank you very much. Those were very good answers to questions that popped up when because of this request. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, it looked like you got some questions answered as well.
I did indeed. Thank you. That's great news. Anybody else have any questions before we call the roll? Seeing none, Kealan, go ahead.
Rubio.
Thank you for the presentation and I vote aye.
Ryan.
Thank you, Lauren and Carl, right? Yes, Carl. Thank you so much. We obviously need to, need to get to the bottom of this and Commissioner Hardisty, I appreciate your questions. I vote aye.
Hardisty.
Muted.
Yes, my thing didn't want to unmute. Thank you so much. Great presentation. Thank you for the answer to my questions. I vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
All right. The ordinance is approved. Thank you very much. We'll go back to item eighteen. That's the time certain item, please.
Consider sorry, okay. Consider appeal of the Goose Hollow Foothills League against the Design Commission's decision to approve with conditions a seventeen-story, one hundred and seventy-five-foot-tall residential building with three hundred and thirty-seven dwelling units and four hundred and three structured parking spaces in the Goose Hollow Sub District of the Central City Plan District, LU two-one dash zero three eight five three nine Daisy.
Colleagues, we tentatively voted to deny the appeal in this matter back on December first, twenty twenty-one. And we're here today to make a final decision as well as to adopt findings. May I have a motion to deny the appeal, uphold the decision of the Design Commission and adopt the findings?
So moved.
Commissioner Hardisty moves. Can I get a second, please? We have a second from Commissioner Maps. Any further discussion on this item?
That was Commissioner Ryan, but
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ryan. Thank you for correcting the record. Do we have any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Kealan, please call the roll.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, back to the regular agenda. Item twenty-three, please.
Authorize competitive solicitation and contracting with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for construction of the Columbia Children's Arboretum Improvement Project for an estimated cost of two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, making our parks more accessible for Portland's most marginalized communities has been a, a big priority of mine since I was elected. And currently, the Columbia Children's Arboretum lacks ADA-compliant accessible paths, parking and facilities. The Columbia Children's Arboretum Improvement Project will include, include, include several elements identified in the two thousand four management plan. They will also address fifteen of the sixteen barriers identified in the twenty fifteen ADA Title II Transition Plan Update Parks Facilities Supplement Improvements will include an ADA-accessible linear trail through the park, bus drop-off and turnaround, ADA parking, bike parking, planting and temporary irrigation and site amenities such as ADA-accessible portable restaurants and enclosures, drinking fountain benches, picnic areas, trash receptacles and nature exploration spots. By moving forward with the Arboretum Improvement Project, Parks and Recreation will deliver essential accessibility improvements for this park serving the East Columbia Neighborhood and beyond. This is a project that has been long awaited by the community since the initial funding was committed in twenty sixteen to implement portions of the two thousand four management plan. So now I'd like to introduce Sarah Burzos from Portland Parks and Recreation to share a presentation on this emergency ordinance.
Good morning, Mayor and members of council. My name is Sandra Burzos. I'm a Capitol Project Manager with Portland Parks and Recreation. My name is Sandra Burzos. I'm a Capitol Project Manager with Portland Parks and Recreation. I'm here today to request council authorization for competitive solicitation and contracting with the lowest responsive, responsible bidder for construction of the Columbia Children's Arboretum Improvement Project. Next slide, please. Located in the East Columbia neighborhood, Columbia Children's Arboretum, accessed at each end from Northeast 6th Drive and Northeast Meadow Lane, is a 28-acre hybrid nature park, which currently includes a non-ADA-accessible linear woodchip and gravel path from one end to the other, pedestrian bridges crossing over slough waterways, a small gravel parking area, picnic tables, portable restrooms and a bench. The park currently lacks ADA-compliant accessible paths, as Commissioner Rubio just mentioned, parking, restrooms, picnic areas and other amenities. There's no safe way for buses to drop off children at the, for, at the park for environmental education programs. The nearest neighborhood park, Farragut, is approximately a mile and a half away to the southwest. Delta Park is a bit further to the west. One of the defining features of the park is its beauty as, next, next slide, please. And one of the defining features of the park is its beauty as a pastoral landscape that is shaped by the large canopy trees that frame long views across its central meadow and trees that line its waterways and main pathway. This site has an environmental education legacy since the 1960s and is currently used by a variety of entities such as BES, Portland Parks and Rec, Camp Elso, and Area Schools for environmental education purposes and habitat restoration projects. It is used by children and adults who experience disabilities and is beloved by the neighborhood as a piece of tranquil nature in the middle of the city. Next slide, please. The city purchased the, the property from Portland Public Schools in 1999 in which PPS retained for itself a perpetual 3.67-acre easement for its bus parking facility at the park's west end off Northeast 6th Drive, as seen near the top left of the drawing. You will also notice a number of slough waterways surrounding and through the site, represented by blue lines and existing bridges in bold orange. In 2004, PPNR engaged the community and completed a management plan that was out, that outlined a long-term vision for the park to protect the site's natural resources while providing needed recreational opportunities. Park System Development charges, funding to implement features from the management plan, was committed over several fiscal years with the first funding committed in 2016 for the current total project budget of $3.385 million. The community was engaged again in 2018 to inform the project design and priorities. Surrounding neighborhoods were canvassed with 400 flyers to let them know about the project and how to get involved. Project updates were provided at East Columbia Neighborhood Association meetings. A diverse project advisory committee, known as a PAC, was assembled that helped inform the design process over the course of four PAC meetings between May and November of 2018. The PAC was comprised of community members and representatives from a number of organizations representing a variety of interests and park users, including Fact Oregon, Camp Elso, Rewild Portland, Columbia Children's Arboretum Friends Group, the Disability Community, Environmental Education and Restoration Interest, neighborhood users and support staff. Separate online listening sessions were held in May of 2018, utilizing Fact Oregon and Camp Elso for community outreach based on their established relationships with numerous user groups. Fact Oregon is a nonprofit that supports families living with disabilities and Camp Elso is a nonprofit environmental education program. Three community gatherings, general public outreach events, were held between May and October 2018, accompanied by online comment forums to correspond with the project initiation, conceptual design and preferred design phases, rounded out the public outreach efforts to come to consensus on the project's priorities and design. Shown here is a plan supported by the community, excuse me, focusing on providing ADA accessibility to include an ADA-accessible 10-foot wide path from one end of the park to the other, bus drop-off and turnaround, that's the circle kind of in the northern area, ADA parking in the small parking lot off Northeast 6th Drive and spaces off that bus turnaround, two portable ADA restrooms and metal enclosures, one near each end of the park, picnic areas with ADA-accessible tables, nature exploration spots along the main accessible path, drinking fountain benches, trash receptacles and native plantings. The construction cost estimate is $2.25 million. Operations and maintenance cost is anticipated to be just under $115,000 per year, which will be paid for by Park's levy funding with the expectation that PPNR, through its sustainable future efforts, will work with City Council to identify a successor resource to address this ongoing cost after the five-year term of the levy. And next slide, please. Sorry. Council approval is required for all construction projects with a value over $1 million. We request that council authorize competitive solicitation and contracting with the lowest responsible bidder for construction of the Columbia Children's Arboretum Improvement Project. Staff asks that council declares an emergency exist to bid and construct the project during the 2022 dry season due to the site's seasonal high-water table and very poor geologic conditions. Therefore, this ordinance would be in full force and effect from and after its passage by council. With the acceptance of the authority to bid by council, we will proceed with bid advertisement this month. We anticipate construction to start in spring of 2022 with a completion date by fall of 2022. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great report. Colleagues, any questions? Not see, Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much, Sandra, for this report and update. I'm just curious. I know that area fairly well and I know the Saloo goes through it, but I can't remember if that's part of the Saloo that's, anyway, my question is this. More and more people are accessing the Saloo with canoes and kayaks and such. Have there been conversations about providing access for them in that park?
I know. There haven't, and it's very tiny through there.
It is tiny, right? That's the part where it narrows. Okay.
Yeah, it's just kind of like a creek, more or less, that goes through the park.
It's like a tributary of the Saloo, right? Okay, that's what I thought. All right. I just, I just had to ask because it's been wonderful to see so many more people accessing the waterways down there. And I just couldn't remember the size and scope. Anyway, it's a beautiful oasis and it's wonderful to hear your report. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Ryan. Uh, Kealan, do we have anybody signed up for this ordinance?
No one signed up.
All right. Very good. This is an emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Rubio.
Um, I want to thank you, Sandra, and Park staff for this presentation and all the work that you've done to lead up to this proposal. I also want to lift up that Portland Parks and Recreation recognizes that central to these discussions and on this work is equity, equity of access and services for all Portlanders. And this is also the lens we use, how we plan and who is at the table. And so I just want to greatly appreciate that the Bureau holds this value with integrity. So I look forward to continuing to monitor the progress and we look forward to the next update. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you again, Sandra. That was a great report. And also really lifts up, as Commissioner Rubio was talking about, a part of town that really needs these type of amenities. It's, it truly is an oasis and it's really coming at a very important time to move fast on these investments for that neighborhood. So I'm enthusiastically voting aye.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Maps.
I want to thank Commissioner Rubio and Parks for bringing this item forward. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Oh, this is great. It's, it's a, uh, it's a visionary and it's an uplifting project. It's easy to support. I vote aye and the ordinance is approved. Next item on the regular agenda, item 24, please.
Authorize competitive solicitation and contract with the lowest responsible bidder and provide payment for construction of the Cedar Crossing Restoration Project number E07158 for an estimated cost of $1,700,000.
Commissioner Maps.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, this item originates with the Bureau of Environmental Services. Over at Environmental Services, we believe that healthy rivers and streams contribute to the health of our city. That's why Environmental Services partners with the community to protect and restore Portland's waterways. Environmental Services projects restore natural habitat for fish and wildlife, reduce flooding for people and property and create a more vibrant city. The project before us today is part of that effort. This environmental restoration work will be done in outer southeast Portland. This project is part of Environmental Services' efforts to transform Johnson Creek. Our goal here is to restore habitat, improve water quality and reduce flooding. Uh, this ordinance authorizes Environmental Services to move forward on a project that would reconnect Johnson Creek with its floodplain near Deardorff Road. This project, again, will do a couple of things. It'll restore natural stream function. It'll add habitat features such as logs, which will slow down the speed of Johnson Creek and thus prevent erosion during storms. This project will reduce downstream flooding and this project will improve stream conditions for Coho and Chinook salmon. Um, colleagues, I want to, uh, make a little digression here and talk about salmon. Uh, you may know that Johnson Creek provides important habitat for Chinook and Coho salmon as well as steelhead and cutthroat trout. While these species still exist in Johnson Creek and its tributaries, their long-term survival depends on what we do today. In other words, if salmon are going to be part of Portland's future, we must restore habitat and improve water quality today. And that's what this project is about. This $1.7 million project is scheduled to begin in May and will be completed by the end of 2022. Here today with a brief presentation, we have Environmental Services Engineering Manager, Joe Dvorak, and Environmental Services Project Manager, Lisa Moszynski. Um, and with that, let me turn it over to staff.
I thank you, Commissioner. That was a great introduction. I think Kealan's going to pull up the PowerPoint that I'm going to share. It's fairly short here. So yeah, good morning and thank you for your time. We come to you today to request authorization to advertise the construction contract for the Cedar Crossing Restoration Project. My name is Lisa Moszynski and I'm the Project Manager for Environmental Services. Next, please. So this project is out in, um, well, sorry, we have a short presentation, sorry, with the five slides. So give an overview of the project. Uh, next slide. The project is located in southeast Portland, out on Johnson Creek, south of Foster Road, off of southeast 134th and Deardorff Road. The project is focused on three city-owned properties and we have a temporary construction easement and primitive entry to work on two adjacent private parcels. You can see the outline of the, uh, project area and red there as well as kind of where this is out on Johnson Creek. Next, please. So our Cedar Crossing Restoration Project is a stream and floodplain restoration project that's going to build upon past restoration work and include removal of the Works Progress Administration walls that were built to straighten and restrain Johnson Creek. The project will add habitat features such as logs to help slow down the speed of Johnson Creek. This not only helps reduce downstream flooding and erosion problems, but also helps provide hiding places for fish and other wildlife. Native plantings along the banks will help shade the creek and keep it cooler in the summer and provide food and shelter for wildlife. Current efforts to restore Johnson Creek focus on returning it to a more natural state. This type of restoration provides a safe place for floodwaters to spread out and soak into the ground. It also helps improve water quality, increase fish and wildlife habitat. Johnson Creek provides important habitat for Coho and Chinook salmon as well as steelhead and cutthroat trout. While these species still exist in Johnson Creek and its tributaries, their long-term survival depends on our ability to restore habitat and improve water quality. Next, please. Since October 2016, Environmental Services has done community outreach and public involvement activities to neighborhood property owners and occupants and business owners who might be impacted by the Cedar Crossing Restoration Project. The project is mostly wooded residential with minimal traffic and is located in the Pleasant Valley neighborhood. The immediate neighborhood is almost entirely owner-occupied, some of whom are the original owners, and some neighbors potentially speak Russian or Vietnamese. Public involvement staff is going to be mindful of this fact while conducting outreach. Additional outreach and translations will be done if the need arises around project sites to translate communication materials for affected community members. Flyers and webpage updates have been the primary method of outreach and public involvement utilized on this project. Stefano Scannawan is our current contact for community outreach and public involvement. Next slide, please. The estimated construction cost for this project is 1.7 million. The estimate has a high level of confidence and is based on final construction drawings. The project is scheduled to advertise later this month and begin construction in May 2022. It's important to align construction with the in-water work window and construction is estimated to last approximately six months. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on this project. Next slide.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you so much, Lisa. Could you go back to the slide that showed the different areas and the, the word BlackBerry? What does that, what, I don't want to assume I know that. Does that just mean there's tons of BlackBerry wishes there?
Yeah, the names of the, those properties. So the BlackBerry property, it's on BlackBerry Circle. There also were BlackBerrys on that property when we acquired it and we, we've been doing some restoration work. The Hefty property is named after the people who owned that property and that we purchased it from in 2019. And then, uh, I had mentioned the property to the south is jointly owned with Portland Parks and that's Deardorff Creek Natural Area.
Right. That's great. Um, thank you. I just didn't want to get too literal. And then my other question is, um, when you're talking about outreach, have you considered connecting with the school districts in that area? Obviously David Douglas and actually I think it goes into Centennial when you get into the, the neighborhood you mentioned. One, because I think they'll be, uh, using the, the upgrades and it'll be really good for their curriculum. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's, um, a great point. And I haven't personally done that, but it's something, I know we have a broader outreach plan in Johnson Creek and we work closely with the Watershed Council. And so there's a chance that there is that happening. It's just that I don't happen to have that information. But I'll, I'll talk with our outreach folks.
And maybe target the science teachers, if you will, of middle schools and such.
Yeah, right.
Wonderful opportunity. So thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Great. Colleagues, any further questions? Kealan, do we have any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
All right. Very good. This is a first reading of an on-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thanks, Lisa. Thank you for a good presentation. All right. We'll go back to the consent agenda. I believe it was item number 19 that has been pulled.
Authorize special appropriation grant agreements with five cultural institutions in amount not to exceed $500,000 to support operating costs and growing infrastructure needs.
One moment here, colleagues. Let me get my talking points here, here, there. I see the problem. I'd like to introduce an amendment to this item that the Clerk's Office has on file. The amendment reads as follows. The grants recipients shall not use these funds for security guards. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Hardesty. Is, uh, so this is now on the table. Do we have anybody signed up for public testimony, Kealan?
Uh, no one signed up. This item was pulled by Commissioner Hardesty's office.
Very good. Colleagues, any further questions on this item? Please call the roll on the amendment.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
I, I, I actually, I, I should have some questions. I'm sorry. I, I got a little confused.
That's fine. We'll suspend the vote for now. Questions, Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, so Commissioner Hardesty, you, you took this off and made the amendment. I think I just would like to hear more from you on point of view on this before I vote. Please.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. And basically, um, after, uh, reading and absorbing the OPB article about the out-of-control downtown private security interest, I just wanted to make sure that we were not, in fact, using city dollars to reinforce, uh, uh, security officers who were poorly trained and appear to be abusing community members downtown.
And just for the record, we have Ginger Dameron on from Grants as well to potentially answer any questions people have. Commissioner Ryan, did you have further questions?
Yeah, Ginger is available, you said?
Correct.
So the way it's currently written, it would give an opening for these organizations to spend these monies on security? Is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, initially, the way it was written was just to say infrastructure costs and operational needs. And I do want to say that this was approved in the fall bump, and it was just a technical issue where the organizations weren't named, and so we had to bring an ordinance before to get authority for these specific five organizations. So the organizations have already agreed to not have it go towards security costs. The amendment would just kind of make that official. And their needs, they've lost revenue. They've had to buy equipment and do building improvements, so they have a lot of other costs that the award funds can go towards.
Ginger, that was very helpful. I recall the vote, and so I just apologize for not having all this context, but that's why we have meetings. So I appreciate the additional information, and it sounds like you've been communicating with the fine people that run these organizations that have really been put into some really tough places in terms of how to operate and make their budgets balance out and also serve the public. So I just wanted to make sure that we are sensitive to each organization and their concerns. So, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Maps.
Yes, I'm not sure if this question is for the mayor or for Ginger. Number one, have we communicated with the grant recipients about this amendment? And if we have communicated with the grant recipients about this amendment, did they raise any objections?
The, this has been communicated to the grant recipients. They have not raised any objections. They're fine with this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, Kealan, we are in the middle of the roll. Why don't you go ahead and continue the roll, please?
Ryan.
Based on that lovely dialogue we just had, I vote aye.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The amendment's approved. To the main motion, any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll on the main motion as amended.
Rubio.
I want to appreciate all those who have worked on this and helped these institutions gain these much-needed resources during this time of heightened economic need. I also want to appreciate Commissioner Hardesty's work to ensure that we clarify the intent of these funds in order to make sure that we meet these needs as well. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you to the good people, the Japanese-American Museum of Oregon, Lansu Chinese Garden, the Oregon Jewish Museum, and Center for Holocaust Education, and Portland Chinatown Museum and Portland Saturday Market. We're rooting for you. We're with you in solidarity. I vote aye.
Hardesty.
Again, it was, I appreciate the aye vote on the amendment. It was really clarifying the conversation we had around the fall bump and making sure that we were being intentional about where we invested limited public resources. I vote aye.
Maps.
Glad to see these resources go into Old Town Chinatown, and for that reason and more, I vote aye.
Wheeler.
You just support this, I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted as amended. Kealan, that completes our business.
Yes, it does.
Very good. Colleagues, thank you. We are adjourned.